Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and distinguished members of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee, thank you for your time today. My name is Stephanie Erickson. I live in Newry, and I request you vote to oppose LD 798. A California native, my husband and I moved to the great state of Maine in 2015 in hopes of providing our two daughters with the best life possible. We moved to Maine from Anaheim, California amidst the passage of SB 277 because of this exact issue. We are lovers of blueberries, skiing, and above all, Jesus. LD 798 is a direct violation of the Constitution of the State of Maine, Article 1, Section 3, Religious Freedom, which states, "All individuals have a natural and unalienable right to worship Almighty God according to the dictates of their own consciences, and no person shall be restrained in that person's liberty or estate for worshiping God in the manner and season most agreeable to the dictates of that person's own conscience." And to my fellow Republicans on this committee, LD 798 challenges the right-to-life movement. There are many reasons why this bill violates religious freedom. As a Christian, I present you with mine. Several vaccines are cultured in cells derived from aborted human fetuses. LD 798 threatens to force me into abandoning my God solely for the purpose of accessing education for my children. This cannot be so. Please consider this information, the supporting documents, and my unalienable right as a Christian, and vote to oppose LD 798.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? All right, we're shifting gears to support for 987. We'll take Shannon Wallace. And then Olivia, and then Edna.
Hi. My name is Shannon Wallace. Dear Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and distinguished members of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee. My name is Shannon. I live in Oakland. I have a degree in health education, and I am a hospital employee. I request you vote to support LD 978 and oppose LD 798. Did I say that right? I was diagnosed with an autoimmune disease, rheumatoid arthritis, when I was 26. I'm currently 44 and have a daughter who is happy and healthy and loves school where she is a thriving, successful student. The CDC's own website says that I should not have certain vaccines due to immune system problems. The title of the page on the CDC website is "Who Should Not Get Vaccinated With These Vaccines?" And listed under "Multiple Vaccines," it states, "Has a parent, brother, or sister with immune system problems." Maine medical exemptions do not cover us. An autoimmune disease is an out-of-control immune system, an immune system that attacks its own tissue. In my case, it's my joints, and it's a debilitating disease I deal with every single day. My grandfather had it, as does a cousin, so we unfortunately have a strong family history. I was a student athlete from kindergarten through college where I played soccer. At 26, I became so disabled from rheumatoid arthritis that I've never been able to play soccer again. What I've had to endure in the last 18 years with rheumatoid arthritis has been physically and emotionally devastating. Vaccines can trigger this in my daughter, which is why the CDC recognizes that someone with her family medical history should not receive vaccines. Unfortunately, Maine medical exemptions do not recognize this. Without the philosophical exemption, we will not be able to follow the advice of the CDC or our doctor. The medical field is always expanding in its knowledge and understanding of the human body and disease and the cause of disease. It's imperative that our healthcare providers, who have the greatest understanding of each individual and their family medical history, be able to make recommendations for us. Instead, LD 798 will require healthcare providers to use dangerous one-size-fits-all medicine and to discard the sacred principle of informed consent. Even if my child were fully vaccinated, I would oppose LD 798. Our bodies are sovereign, and the government should not force us to be injected against our will. It's unlikely we will be able to stay in Maine if this bill passes. Trying to survive on a single income would destroy us financially. Equally devastating -- equally as devastating will be telling my daughter she can't go to school. She won't even be able to come back to Maine for college. I've lived in Maine most of my life, and my entire family is here. We will be forced to move out of state and sell our home. This will be the end of a life in Maine for our family. Please do not allow this to happen. Please oppose LD 798 and support LD 987. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Just a second. Are there any questions? Thank you very much. Now, we're going to hear from Olivia Wolf.
Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and members of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee, good evening. I am Olivia Wolf from central New Jersey. I have a bachelor's degree from Middlebury College and a master's degree in education from the College of New Jersey. Our daughter is a freshman at Colby College. She was drawn to the school because of its highly-regarded environmental studies program, as well as its location. We have visited family in Maine since she was a child. Colby's generous financial aid program for middle-class families, along with initiatives like Davis Connects and the Waterville-Colby Revitalization Partnership, were key factors in her decision to apply. Her expectations have been exceeded. She has made lifelong friends, joined a varsity team, and gotten a campus job as a research assistant. She is fully engaged in the Colby community and loves her school. She is currently solidifying her major, environmental science, with a concentration in biology, as well as her career plans, to become a field scientist and researcher. Although our daughter does not define herself by her health issues, they are ever-present. She wears a MedAlert bracelet and will take medication daily for the rest of her life. This and a complex medical history have led our primary doctor to strongly recommend discontinuing vaccination. Unfortunately, she does not qualify for a medical exemption. If this bill passes, our daughter will have to leave Colby. Her professors, coaches, athletic trainer, and friends will wonder, "What happened?" I respectfully ask you to vote against LD 798 and for LD 987. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
I have you also down for opposition of -- no, I'm sorry. So, we have you down in support of 987.
Yes.
Are you offering testimony?
This is my testimony for that as well.
Okay.
Edna Dodge, thank you very much.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Certainly. I'm sorry, you'll have to get up. Senator Carson?
Yeah, thank you. Have you explored with your primary care physician what it would take to get a medical exemption? I mean, is this a substance you've really delved into, or have you simply been told, "No, no medical exemption in Maine"?
I've looked at the medical exemption. It's so narrow that it does not cover our daughter.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'd like to ask a follow-up.
Sure. Senator Millet.
So, have you had that conversation with a doctor about that, or is that your determination of the review of the statute, of the rules?
That's my determination. Yes. Thank you.
Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and distinguished members of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee. My name is Edna Dodge. I live in Belfast, Maine. I request you vote to oppose LD 798 and support LD 987. My husband and our five children live in our home that has been in the family since the '50s. We are all born and raised in Maine. Our ancestry in Maine both date back to the 1800s. We both graduated with degrees from the University of Maine in Orano as well. I strongly believe that LD 798 removes fundamental rights from us as parents. We have a doctor that we trust and discuss our choices about vaccines with her. We have a child who has anaphylactic allergies, and he must avoid all exposure to his allergens. If he is exposed, he gets violently ill and has to be treated in the hospital. He has reacted to multiple medications in the past. There are mandated vaccines that contain his allergens. It is terrifying as a mom to watch your child struggle to breathe and the health professionals to struggle to get him breathing properly. Our doctor is aware of this medical issue and helps us determine which medical procedures are safe for him and our other children. This is the safest method for them. We need the philosophical exemption to keep them safe and to allow them to participate in our local school district. Our doctor, who I asked specifically, has been -- is unable to provide a medical exemption for my child, given Maine's very restrictive medical exemption allowances. If we were not allowed to participate in our local school district, we would be forced to move out of state. Our families would be devastated by the loss of our close proximity and only be able to see their grandchildren when one of us were able to travel across states. LD 9 -- LD 798 is in opposition to keeping young Maine families in Maine. This would also affect our small city financially. Our local school district could lose $50,000 per year if we were not allowed to participate. I understand that LD 798 is intended to keep children from -- safe from harm. I appreciate the sentiment to protect all children. However, the safety of some children should not come from the harm of others. Vaccines are not without risk. They are currently -- there are currently no standards for screening children who are at risk to be harmed. Government mandates fail to look at the safety of each individual child. Doctors and parents are able to do this together. We ask you to preserve our right to do so. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. I've also handed you my family doctor's testimony. She was not able to stay and testify because she had to return to patients.
All right. Thank you very much. Are you related to our Representative Dodge from Belfast?
No, we discussed that.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you. Lynn Olson.
Before we begin, I'd like to call into the front row Andrew Schmidt, Deborah Hagler, Giuliano Littero, Paul Fidalgo, Peggy McKay.
Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and members of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee, my name is Lynn Olson. I live in Gray, and I ask you to oppose LD 798 and support LD 987. My first baby was born nearly 19 years ago. He's a freshman at University of Maine in Orano. He's fully vaccinated. When he was an infant, I took him for every vaccine as scheduled. He never cried for more than a few minutes, and he never had more than a tiny red bump at the injection site. Four years later, his brother was born, and again I drove my newborn to every well-child check and held him while the nurses injected him with prescribed vaccinations. After every injection, we ended up in the emergency room. He suffered from eczema, high fevers, ear infections, and reactive airway disease. In time, I began to connect the timing of these illnesses. I talked to my doctor about my concerns, and he recommended that we spread the vaccines out. He helped me to prioritize vaccines, and we started to give fewer shots with more time between, but the trend continued. I started researching vaccines and looking at the illnesses I was trying to protect my kids from. I don't mean I read trendy Facebook articles or watched pop stars announce vaccines. I didn't know there was a label for people who were concerned, let alone a movement. After much researching, I decided to stop vaccines and see what would happen with my son's health. His doctor agreed. So, at age four, we stopped vaccinating my second child. He's never suffered an ear infection or an episode of reactive airway again. His skin is so clear, you would never know that when he was a baby, his cheeks were so raw, they would sometimes bleed. I'm not anti-vaccination. I firmly believe that for some kids and for some families, vaccination is the best choice. And I also believe that for some kids, like my second son, vaccines cause more harm than good. Parents must be able to make these choices together with their medical professionals. People ask me if I worry about my son getting sick. My answer is always yes. Yes, of course, I worry about him getting sick. What parent doesn't? Do I worry about him getting sick more than his older brother, who is fully vaccinated? No, because I've seen his immune system do what it's meant to do. What I worry about most, every single day, is what will happen to my son and to our family if we are mandated to catch him up on his vaccines. None of his reactions would qualify him for a medical exemption, per his doctor, and yet he clearly has a negative, unintended physical reaction to vaccines. We will be forced to withdraw my son from a school that he adores or risk his long-term health, and we will have to consider relocating our family outside of the state where I grew up and I intended to raise my family. I ask you, please, keep parental choice intact. Please recognize that we know our children best and that none of us are making these choices lightly. We all agonize over what is best for our children in pretty much every aspect of their lives, and this one is no different. Allow us, with our medical professionals, to make decisions about our children's medical care. Pass LD 987 so our doctors are empowered to help us make these choices. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you.
Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and honorable members of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee, thank you for the opportunity to address you on this very important issue. My name is Dr. Jane Robertson, and I am the owner of Robertson Chiropractic in Belfast. But more -- most importantly, I am the mom of two healthy, unvaccinated children, ages 17 and 22. You will hear from my 17-year-old later. I am in favor of LD 987, and I oppose LD 798 for many reasons, as I oppose vaccines for many reasons, but I will list just a few. Number one, the vaccine ingredients. Number two, there are no double-blind studies on vaccines. Number three, vaccines produce temporary and artificial versus natural immunity to diseases. Number four, diseases were almost eradicated before the introduction of vaccines due to improved sanitation, hygiene, nutrition, working, and living conditions. And number five, even though the United States has a very high vaccination rate, we are not a healthy country. We are ranked 35th on Bloomberg's Healthiest Country Index, and our infant mortality rate is very high. In fact, the school vaccination rates in Maine for 2017, 2018 were all above 96 percent. In chiropractic college, I was taught that healing comes from within the body. The immune system is designed to fight viruses and bacteria. If a person lives a healthy lifestyle, there is no need for medications or vaccinations, and my family is living proof. I have been studying and researching vaccines for the past 25 years, and because of this knowledge, I could never and I would never sign a consent vaccination form. Religious and philosophical vaccine exemptions exist to protect our basic human rights. First and foremost is informed consent. As a doctor, every one of my patients signs my consent-to-treat form, which fully explains the treatment that they will receive from me and gives me permission to give them care. Mandatory vaccine programs violate the Nuremberg Code, which states that anyone participating in an experiment must give informed consent. All participants must understand the risks, and we truly do not understand the risks of vaccines without double-blind studies. If a parent wants to vaccinate, that is their choice, but mandatory vaccination takes away my choice. In conclusion, I ask you to oppose LD 798 because every child is entitled to a free public education. You don't deny education to sick children, hostile children, angry children, or disabled children. Denying education to healthy, unvaccinated children is discrimination. We live in the United States of America, land of the free and home of the brave, also known as the land of the free because of the brave. Each and every one of these individuals presenting here today are willing to stand up and fight for our rights, and we will continue to stand up and we will continue to keep fighting because mandatory vaccination is unconstitutional. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Thank you. We're going to shift gears. Now, we're going to be in support of 798, and we're starting with Andrew Schmidt.
Senator Millet, Representative Cornfield, and members of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee, I plan to come here just as a dad with two healthy kids, currently healthy, and to represent the vast majority of parents who are too busy, distracted by too many things to be here, but who support vaccines, who vaccinate their kids, and who believe we have a duty to each other, to the community, to make it so that our kids are not vectors of disease and so that our schools can be safe, especially for the most vulnerable. I'm submitting a letter that I wrote and that is signed by over 700 families or 700 individuals. There's a -- there's about 730, but there's a couple doubles, so I'll say 700. And that's just a small fraction of the people who really care about this issue but aren't -- but, you know, couldn't give up work to come here. I'm also an attorney, and I've heard some misinformation today about the National Vaccine Injury Compensation Program, so I wanted to help everyone understand what that is. And that's a no-fault system. So, we can't say just because someone was compensated in that program that a vaccine injured them. What it does instead is it says, "Okay, a child has a condition that theoretically could have been caused by a vaccine." And we will err on the side of being absolutely -- or err on the side of compensating if we're not sure. So, we will -- we will give compensation if it's just conceivably possible without the normal causation standards that we require in court. So, the CDC has given out 3,749 compensated claims, but that's out of 3.1 billion inoculations, so about one in a million. And even there, 80 percent of the compensated -- compensation awards were settlements where the CDC determined -- or, sorry, the Department of Health determined that -- or the Department of Health was not able to conclude that there was evidence that the alleged vaccine caused the injury. But nevertheless, because it was theoretically possible, it erred on the side of compensation. I'm also -- I've also looked at the vaccine exemption rules and think that they're being completely mischaracterized here, and I'm happy to answer questions about that. But I -- my reading is that physicians can just find that a vaccine may be medically inadvisable, as the statute says, and the Maine CDC has simply listed reasons why a physician may issue a vaccine exemption, but it has not listed reasons, the only reasons, why it may happen. And I've never heard of a physician submitting a statement that was rejected by a school, and in fact, I believe it has never happened.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Yes. Okay, Representative McCray.
I've done well for me.
You have.
Okay. Anyway, for the work session, I've been wondering this for the last many hours. For the work session, could we get a list of those medical exceptions that are approved or what? Maybe we already have it, and I missed it. But could we get a list of medical exceptions or how one is to get one, should they need one? Because we've heard a lot of people here today that I think could really use a medical exception, and I don't know how you get it, how hard it is to get one.
You don't need to answer that. You don't need to give.
Well, I'm happy to submit the regulations. I know where they are on the Internet.
Well, the way I wanted this to go is to get it to the analyst so that the question would come back for the work session.
Correct. We'll get it from a different source, but thank you. Wait a minute, you had another question? Representative Dodge.
I think it's been answered. I, too, have a question about how we will better understand medical exemptions and how and why some folks have not perhaps pressed to receive those medical exemptions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, oh.
Sorry, while we're bothering the analyst, I just wanted to also add to that. Could we get the CDC exemptions, too? Because I've also heard testimony saying that the CDC's exemptions are much less strict than the Maine exemptions, and I just wanted to get a look for work session at both of those.
All right. Thank you. All right. Now, we will go to Deborah Hagler. Are you surprised that we got to you? She -- I called her, and then she said, "Oh."
I'm surprised. Good evening, Senator Millet and Representative Cornfield and esteemed members of the Education and Cultural Affairs Committee. Thank you so much for spending so much time on this. My name is Deborah Hagler. I'm a representative of Harpswell. I've been a pediatrician in Maine for the past 22 years, and I am president-elect of the Maine chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics, and I'm here in support of LD 798. And I'm going to go off-script and just spend a little bit of time to reassure families that we are here for all children. We highly support the vaccine schedule. Families, there are strict medical exemptions, but family -- this is not going to take away a family's right to have a discussion with their physician. It will actually force some hard discussions. We know from California that has passed similar vaccine legislation that their actually medical exemption rate has gone up, but also so has their vaccination rate. I also want to comment that waiting for these illnesses to enter into their school system would be a disaster. These illnesses take hold quickly, and symptoms sometimes -- people are contagious a day before often symptoms occur. So, if you get behind the eight ball, you've lost the battle. And I would just -- there's been comments about the cost to school systems of children dropping out. What California has seen is the -- is children enrolling and staying in school and actually having conversations and getting their vaccines. And we really -- Dr. Zager had started to talk about the cost to the medical system. The cost of dealing with these outbreaks is tremendous to the medical system. During flu season, we're already busy enough. The cost of one outbreak of investigating and dealing with one measles infection is estimated by the CDC to be about 142,000. And I don't know if most of you have read the article about the young boy in Oregon. His cost of care was close to $1 million, and that was for one vaccine-preventable illness. In 2011, there were approximately 220 cases of measles in the United States, and the cost estimates from that outbreak, that small outbreak, are anywhere from $2.7 million to $5.3 million. So, there's huge costs. Oh, am I moving? I'm sorry. I'm -- yeah, I'm getting a little bit droopy. Sorry. Put it -- push it away. Put it up here. And don't lean -- don't get close. Hands on. But I would want to -- I want to say what I'm stunned about and want to say that your friendly pediatricians are stunned by the amount of fear that I hear from parents. And this is not a conspiracy. We give parents the best advice. We listen. The vaccine -- the vaccine industry is heavily researched. There are lots of randomized control trials of these vaccines. I sent every one of you lots of email this morning because I knew I only had three minutes with emails about how vaccines are produced and get onto the market. There's a beautiful PowerPoint slide of the data of every county in the United States with lots of redness where vaccine rates have dropped. And finally, medical -- all the major religions in the United States strongly support and have come out for vaccination, but we hear the fear in all our families' voices, and we are here to listen to them and work with all families, but we strongly support this legislation to protect all our children in school.
Could you just briefly say something about the medical exemption?
It's our understanding.
Particularly about the "may."
Pardon me?
Particularly about the "may."
May?
The word "may" in the...
Our understanding and reading of that is there are strict criteria, and we can get the copy of the CDC recommendations, but when a physician talks to a patient, they will give -- if there is a reason that includes, for instance, listening to the congenital adrenal hyperplasia with someone on chronic steroids is going to get a medical exemption for being on it. So, a physician will write a letter and saying that that child, for medical reasons, will not receive vaccines, and that then -- that, in our experience, has never been not accepted by a school. So, as far as I know, there is -- what I have been told by the school is, "Dr. Hagler, you cannot write..." cannot write the IEP of the child or the 504 Plan. That is our purview and our understanding, and we are not going to write your prescriptions and your medical exemptions. That is your purview. And that is how we interpret the rules. And I looked at the DHS rules, and there is a line that says, a letter from a physician is saying that vaccines are inadvisable for medical reasons in the rulebook for DHS. And I can, I wish I had photographed that for the committee, but that is our interpretation.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Good luck.
Good luck. Here. All right, we'll return again to her. Paul Fidalgo. While Mr. Fidalgo is coming up, I'd like to call... Oh, boy.
Zelia.
Zelia Cavalier, Zach Mazoni, Elizabeth Shardlow, Christian Northrup, Jamie Chase, to the front row in the committee room. Thank you.
So, hello, Senator Milet, Representative Cornfield, members of the committee. Thank you for hearing my testimony today. My name is Paul Fidalgo. I'm a resident of Saco, and I'm here to support LD 798. I'm the father of two children, ages nine and six, both in the public school system. I'm also the communications director of the Center for Inquiry, a national nonprofit organization that seeks to foster a secular society based on reason, science, and humanist values. I'm supporting 798 for two reasons. First, public policy should be based on facts and evidence, not personal anecdote, not conspiracy theories, not YouTube's recommendation algorithm. Second, religious exemptions, in particular, to public health laws undermine our constitutional separation of church and state by privileging religious beliefs over our public interests in health and safety. The evidence in support of vaccines, as you've heard, is in and crystal clear. They are safe and effective. High rates of vaccination protect the most vulnerable of us, including children, the elderly, the sick, those of us who cannot receive vaccinations for legitimate medical reasons, like a severe allergic reaction, by the way, and I am one of those people. So, there are consequences for those who claim non-medical exemptions to vaccination. In Washington State, as you know, a large number of exemptions has led to a measles outbreak that continues to sicken and endanger residents. So, when we talk about the importance of getting vaccinated, this point can't be made strongly enough. It's not just about you. It's not even just about one's own kids. Our philosophical objections do not occur in a vacuum. My kids are vaccinated because it protects them from dangerous diseases and because it protects others. And as to religious exemptions from public health laws, I unequivocally support every person's right to freedom of and from religion, but that freedom should never be an excuse to put other people at risk. Viruses don't care what religion you believe in. Sadly, religious exemptions are ripe for abuse. One prominent website explains, end of quote, "How to Get a Religious Exemption Like a Boss." Coaching people in the use of convincing religious rhetoric. The author warns vaccine deniers not to delve into their actual objections, those unrelated to religious belief. When she says, quote, "Anytime you find yourself talking about anything other than your religious beliefs, start over. No talking about the effects of toxins on the body. Your argument needs to be religion-based, so stick to the Bible." So, it's time to end religious exemptions to our state vaccination laws. It's time for all of us to recognize that privately-held beliefs must never be used to jeopardize the health of our children or anyone else's. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you have, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we'll take Peggy McCray.
Good evening, Senator Milet, Representative Cornfield, and members of the Committee on Education and Cultural Affairs. My name is Peggy McCray. I'm an RN. I live in Lewiston. I work in Portland, and I'm currently the president for Omni Nursing Leaders of Maine. I'm here today on behalf of Omni to express our support of LD 798. I'm not going to read a lot of my testimony, because you have heard some of the data that I've also put into my testimony. You have heard, as far as the fact of herd immunity and community immunity, you've heard about the rates that we have in Maine, so I won't go through that. However, I do want to identify that as nurse leaders, we are responsible to advocate for the health and well-being of our patients as well as the residents of our communities. Although we believe in freedom of choice, we can't support those choices when they may make a negative impact to the health of our community members. I want to bring you just to my personal story related to this, as there's all the data that you can read and so forth, but my brother and I contracted measles before vaccines were available. This occurred when my mother was five months pregnant. This led my mother to staying with my grandparents and my father having to take time off from work to care for me and my brother. We didn't see our mother for two weeks, and for a six-year-old, that seemed like a lifetime. The next five months were also stressful for our family, as we waited to see if the exposure to my mother would result in any harm to her pregnancy or to my younger brother. Fortunately, all was well. I don't know about that about my younger brother. We often talk about that, but that's a whole other thing. However, there were other families of classmates that weren't as fortunate at that time. One of my classmates, who had contracted measles due to a previous immune-compromised condition, succumbed to the disease. I was not aware of that younger. I learned that farther, a little bit later in my school year. During that same time, my favorite recess buddy, also contracted measles, developed encephalitis, and although she survived, was left with permanent cognitive damage and no longer could stay in our class and can, no longer could be my recess buddy. Similar stories like that could happen today, but by having restrictions on opt-out options, we can increase our immunization rates, and we can avoid some of that. As nurse leaders, we strive to educate our patients and the public on practices that will improve health and lessen the potential for disease and death. The facts are clear that immunizations can save lives and eliminate disease. Allowing parents to opt out of having their children vaccinated is a public health crisis and needs to be mitigated with more restrictive laws. We realize that the restriction may cause parents to seek medical exemptions. However, this is where myself and our, my healthcare colleagues can have the greatest impact by having opportunity to provide education and understanding of the value of immunizations and dispel the myths associated with vaccines. Omni Nurse Leaders of Maine is in support of LD 798 and the positive impact that it can have on the health and well-being of all the residents of Maine. We additionally hold ourselves as role models and are in support of removing the religious and philosophic exemptions from the CDC's guidelines for healthcare worker immunizations. I thank, thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Are there any questions? Yes. Representative Rudnicki.
Just one. You cited in your testimony, and we had heard it referenced earlier, but maybe you could tell me actually where you got the information is, that says Maine is the seventh worst in the nation for vaccine coverage? Could you tell me where you got it?
Yeah, I actually got it off the Maine CDC website.
The Maine CDC website?
Yeah. They have information on that.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Oh, Juliana Littaroo. Sure. Okay, so, we're going to move on to Zelia Cavalier.
Senator Milet, Representative Cornfield, and the distinguished members of the Educational and Cultural Affairs Committee, this is a testimony in opposition to LD 798 and in support of LD 987. My name is Zelia Cavalier. I'm the mother of a medically complex, medically fragile child. Her name is Juliana, and she's five and a half years old. We live in Berwick, Maine, and my daughter attends a private school in Elliott. Finding a school that could accommodate her medical needs was not easy. This bill would prevent her from having access to an education. We've spent the better part of five years attempting to manage our daughter's medical condition. We've sought out specialized medical care and dealt with hospitalizations and more emergency room trips than I could possibly count. I would literally have to get her records to figure out how many times we've been in the ER. Her case is unique, and part of treating it has required us to travel halfway across the U.S. for specialized treatment, testing, and surgeries. Her future includes pretty much more of the same. So, uncovering all the facets of her condition is an ongoing process, and there are only a few people who specialize in treating it, which makes it tricky. We spend hours each day administering her medication. I had to make special arrangements to our entire lives for the last two days, just to be able to be here with you today for her care while I'm away from her. The topic of vaccinations came up with our pediatrician, as it usually does, and our pediatrician told us not to vaccinate Juliana because of her medical condition and because of the family history of disease and vaccine reactions. She went on to tell us that she could not write a medical exemption for our daughter because she doesn't qualify for a legal medical exemption. She said that she couldn't risk her career or her license to attempt to write one, and having seen the current political climate, I have to agree with that assessment of the risk to her livelihood. Therefore, we continue to use the now-available exemptions to enroll our daughter in her private school. I know there are many other families in the same position. LD 798 directly endangers girls and boys like Juliana, kids who can't have vaccinations but who can't get a medical exemption, children whose pediatricians have told their parents not to vaccinate them but will not write them a medical exemption because the legal guidelines are too narrow. There are so many factors to consider when making a decision about whether or not to vaccinate a child. They include the child's unique medical history, the family history, and of course, the risks of receiving the vaccine versus the risk of potential exposure to the illness, and the family's religious and philosophical ideals. In the face of these risks, I'm comforted to know that since 2000, there's only been a single case of measles in all of Maine. That was in 2017, and it was actually a foreigner who was diagnosed in the state and did not spread to anybody else. There have also been zero deaths related to measles for children in over 20 years. So, I beg you to oppose LD 798 and support LD 987. Do not put children like Juliana at risk, please.
Are there any questions? Thank you. Oh, oh.
I do, I do have a question.
Yes.
I was just talking with the current president of the American Academy of Pediatrics of Maine, who's a physician who's practiced for about 20 years in Maine, and I actually know her personally. And I said, has a physician ever written a request for a medical exemption, which the CDC has turned down? And she said, not to my knowledge. They're not as narrow as people are making them out to be. So, I, if you haven't pressed your physician, I would ask that you press your pediatrician and ask if he or she will write that letter, see whether it is accepted or not, and then get back to us and let us know if a letter such as the one that you feel that you need. And I don't doubt that for a second.
Senator, I don't, I don't think that this is appropriate in terms of giving advice to people coming to testify.
I will touch on the question that I heard there about how hard I pushed for this exemption. This was a conversation that went on over the course of several months. There was actually a program we wanted to enroll our daughter in that we were not able to because of her vaccination status, and so, we pushed really hard to get the medical exemption. And the physician said, do not vaccinate her, but I cannot write this exemption. Currently, in California, there's a lot of issues going on with people's licensures being under investigation because they've written medical exemptions, so pushing the envelope to write them is not something she felt she could do. I would also say, I've been listening to testimonies all day, and I'm hearing a lot of the lawyers say that we are able to, that physicians are able to write it, and that the illnesses listed in the, in the law are just like, as guidelines, like, sure, if they have this, you know, go ahead and write it. If that's the case, that they can write it for anything in their discretion, that needs to be made abundantly clear to doctors so that the parents of children like Juliana can actually get the support that they need.
Well, you've clearly, thank you, you've clearly raised an issue that needs work, and I simply wanted to check it with somebody who's a very experienced pediatrician, and I apologize, Madam Chair. We will definitely look into this, I promise you.
Thank you.
Zach Mazoni. Elizabeth Shardlow.
I'll wait, because I have a, okay. All right. Senator Milet, Representative Cornfield, and distinguished members of the committee, my name is Elizabeth Shardlow, and I live in Kennebent County. I'm here today to provide you a very brief summary of the Maine CDC data on school vaccinations. When comparing the CDC data on actual vaccination rates across the country, it is clear that we don't have the seventh-highest exemption rate, but in fact, we have the fourth-highest overall vaccination rates of all the states that have both religious and philosophical exemptions. Since 2015, the last time vaccine exemptions were before the legislature, the kindergarten vaccine uptake rate has increased for every school vaccine, summed by nearly 5%. The MMR uptake rate has increased from 89.9% to 94.3%. DTAP has increased from 94.4% to 96.5%. And Vericela has gone up from 93.8% to 96.5%. This year's kindergarteners ranked Maine the highest in the nation for vaccination coverage when they were toddlers, as was published in the Banger Daily News in 2017, and I've provided you that article. I've provided you with the CDC MMWR, which is the Morbidity and Mortality Weekly Report, for the 2017 to 2018 school year, which is the source of the seventh-highest exemption claim, as well as the data where you can see just how high Maine's vaccination coverage actually is. Some places, like Washington, D.C., report a 5% exemption, yet 20% of their children are not vaccinated. Colorado has only an 88% to 89% vaccination rate, but doesn't report exemptions at all. Maine simply reports every child who has an exemption on file, even if they are fully vaccinated, for all other vaccines. Our vaccination uptake rate among schoolchildren is the highest it has ever been in the history of this state. Despite this, there is increased concern about pockets of children in some schools. However, when you look closely at the data, which I've also provided to you, you will see that half of these schools have very small grades, less than 10 or 20 children. In those classes, if one child hasn't received their fourth dose of a vaccine, they will be counted as exempt and bring their school's reported vaccination rate below the 95% threshold. In a third of the schools with 5% or greater exemption, just one child is exempt. Yesterday, the Portland Press Herald published an article reporting that there are 31 public schools in Maine with exemption rates over 15%. This is inaccurate. There are actually only 24. Of these, only seven schools had kindergartens with more than 20 students. It is important to understand that the focus on kindergarten rates is a little misleading, given that the final dose of all school vaccines is given between four and six years. Thus, some kindergarteners who enter school at four or five years of age simply haven't finished the series. We have historically seen the vaccination rate go up in first grade and again in seventh grade, and you can see that in the Maine CDC data. Before removing tens of thousands of Mainers from their daycares, schools, and places of employment out of completely unfounded fear, we must look at the data to justify such a drastic measure. Where is that justification with the highest vaccination rate this state has ever seen? I ask that you oppose LD 798, and I appreciate your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Ms. Shardlow, you state here in your testimony that Maine ranks fourth-highest among states that have both religious and philosophical exemptions.
Correct.
But that excludes those with only religious and none, correct?
Correct. We rank 30th-highest in overall exemption rates of all. Wyoming did not report, so it's 49 states and the District of Columbia, were 30th-highest in exemption or 20th-highest in vaccination, depending on how you look at it, of the 50 reporting.
or 20th highest in vaccination, depending on how you look at it, of the 50 reporting. And I've provided you with a breakdown. I've given you both this, the MMWR report with the data, and then I've given you a further breakdown where the data is sorted, not just by state, but also by vaccine, and also among the states that do have both exemptions.
Are there any other questions? Representative Farnsworth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I appreciate all of the data that you've given. Can you give me a little bit of your background? Because it's obviously more sophisticated than just the standard, you know, high school graduate.
I appreciate that. I, my background, I'm a small business owner. I'm a mother of four, and I am a full-time college student at the University of Maine at Augusta. And in my spare time, I like to geek things out with vaccine data.
Senator Puleat.
Well, first, I just need to say there's some pretty sophisticated, successful, and exceptional citizens in this country that are just high school graduates. On this list, there's 29 states that have, you know, vaccine-effective exemption rates.
Correct.
Or worse than the state of Maine.
Yes.
Is there some data you could provide for us for the work session that shows if the incidences of outbreaks or negative impacts are worse in those states? I mean, I look at the District of Columbia, and of course, there's a lot of problems going on in D.C. But I would like to know, you know, if there are more outbreaks, there are more problems. I mean, 20%, nearly 20% overall exemption rate. It just seems to me like if these states have all these exemptions going on, that they would have more problems, but I'm not sure that that's really the case.
Right. So the real crux of that is, and it's going to vary by state, there, every state, we learned that we were looking at the flu vaccine, every state on their state website, and it varies. Sometimes you have to dig deeper to find it. But they do weekly, basically weekly updates, especially during flu season, and they track all of the vaccine preventable diseases. So it'll vary by state, and the District of Columbia has their own health department. What's important to understand is that this issue of the exemption rate is that Maine reports every single child that has an exemption. And so you will have children who have exemptions but are also vaccinated. There's an example, one of those seven schools that are big pocket issues. Henry Kachel School in Monmouth has a 19% exemption rate, and they have like 40-something kids in their class, in their kindergarten. It's a fairly, fairly substantial exemption rate. However, they have 100% vaccination for Varicella. They have a 91.5% vaccination rate for, I believe that's polio, and their others are 85.1 and 83. Like they, they, these children are not unvaccinated. They just haven't finished that series. And those, Henry Kachel School is one of those, those pockets that we look at and we panic about, and that the Press-Herald did the article on. You, it is impossible, I mean, it has to add up to 100. It's impossible to have a child who is both vaccinated and exempt in the data that the CDC puts out if you're really understanding that they have, we're the seventh highest in the nation. It's not. It's just that we are really good at our data. And you can see that, again, by looking at the actual vaccination rate compared to the ones that are not vaccinated. In fact, in the MMWR report, there's actually a graph, and there wasn't a data that was filed that impacts that graph, but it is not attached because it didn't change Maine's data. So I didn't, I didn't print that one out. I obviously spent some time copying. But there's a graph where you can see the states that have these big gaps in missing data, and Maine is not one of them. We have 100% of our kids accounted for, maybe 99.99. But it's just because we do such a good job at reporting. But our actual vaccination rate, which is what we need to look at if we're concerned, concerned about herd immunity, is abundantly clear.
Thank you. So I'm looking at some data from the CDC, Maine CDC, where it identifies the numbers of medical exemptions, the number of religious or philosophical exemptions.
Yes.
So it appears to me that they are actually counting exemptions, not where students are along in their progress.
Correct. Correct. And that's one of those pockets. I mean, you can look at this for every pocket. I printed it out in 1,200 DPI, so you can use a magnifying glass, which is required, but you can actually see it. And then that colored graph that you're looking at, Senator Millet, is a breakdown of all of the schools that have greater than 5% exemption. And I'm happy to provide that electronically, so you can sort that. That's where you see that these schools that have 33% exemption, well, they only have three kids in their kindergarten. So if one kid hasn't received all their vaccines, then that's going to jack up their exemption rate.
Any other questions? Thank you.
Christiane Northrup. Before we start with Ms. Northrup, again, Laura Linnert, Ryan Gagnon, Amy Belile, Carrie Young, and Dr. Stephen